All right, it's seven o'clock. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I want to call to order the February 17th, 2021, meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission. And for starters, just for the record, to take a roll call vote, Mr. Light?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Kohler?
Yep.
Ms. Ishii?
Here.
Mr. Shulon?
Here.
And I'm here also, I'm Kier Witson. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. And I want to also just take a moment and thank everyone for wearing a mask tonight. Obviously, it's an old building with not great air circulation, and the pandemic is ongoing, so it's noted that everyone is wearing a mask, and we all really appreciate that. Moving ahead in the agenda for the adoption of the agenda, I wonder if my colleagues would just indulge me for a moment. We have a winter storm on the doorstep. I think people are eager to get back home as early this evening as possible. Also, you may notice, we have an American Sign Language interpreter in the room for one group of applicants, which will add some time to tonight's discussions. And also, a lot of public participation is likely to occur. So I wanted to suggest some winnowing and cutting of the agenda for efficiency's sake. And let me walk through that, and then I would be open to a motion. First of all, to allow the American Sign Language interpreter and the related applicants to come earlier in the meeting, I'd propose that we shift the agenda to change the order of old and new business. So that would be swapping the order of Item G and H on the agenda. Next, I would propose that we strike from the agenda for consideration at a regularly scheduled March meeting. Item C, which is a matter of rules of procedure related to electronic participation in meetings. Finally, I would also propose, under new business, that we strike Items Four and Five, and we can discuss later, but my proposal there is to schedule a work session, as we tried to do earlier this month, and focus on those items during a work session in approximately two weeks. And the last item I'd like to propose striking is, under Item D1, adoption of the minutes for the December 16th, 2020, regular meeting, and the meeting which was continued, I believe, on the 29th of December. Ms. Ishii, at my request, did provide support for her proposed edits with links to the video recording of that meeting. However, I've not had a chance to review those because they did arrive this morning. So I'd also like to strike, for now, for consideration in March, Item D1. With that...
I'll move that.
Okay, so we have a motion to make those...
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of making those changes to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Kerwin, or both, because you have people online who may want to identify who made their motion and second.
Mr. Sharp went ahead and made the motion, and Mr. Light seconded that motion. And Ms. Summers, if you could, as we go through the agenda, if I miss the reordering, don't hesitate to jump in.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So hopefully, with that, we can move efficiently, and I appreciate the cooperation of my colleagues here. Very quickly, I realize there are some faces in the audience with regard to one application in particular, individuals who might not have come before any Rappahannock County government body before. So by way of introduction, my name's Kier Witson. I'm a member of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, and I'm serving concurrently for one year on the Planning Commission, which is this body. And joined by Mary Catherine Ishii, who is the appointee for the Piedmont District, Brian Shulon, who's the appointee for the Wakefield District, Mr. Kohler, who's the appointee for the Jackson Voting District, Mr. Light, who's the appointee for the Stonewall-Hawthorne Voting District, and Mr. Henry, who's the appointee for the Hampton Voting District. And to my right is Mr. Alex Sharp, who is the Board of Zoning Appeals representative to the Planning Commission. If you're here for a special use permit application, and there are two on the agenda tonight, you'll see Mr. Sharp again, because those applications, as a next step, will go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. In your case, you're here for a special exception permit application, and the next step in the process is you'll go before the local governing body on which I sit, so we'll see you again there. Next on the agenda, I believe, is the adoption of the minutes of the January 20th, 2021, regular meeting. Ms. Ishii did have some minor non-substantive edits, and if you have a copy of those, Ms. Ishii, if you just want to walk us through those, and perhaps we can move forward with adopting those minutes.
Sure, those look pretty quick. So, these are just technical, so under page two, under the public comment section, just add "the" before Mount Airy Field Incorporated in the first sentence and the second paragraph. I think everybody's given concerns that. In that same second paragraph, under public comment, to the third sentence, change the word "in line" to two separate words "in line." In the third paragraph on that same page, still have a public comment, and the first sentence changed "was in opposition to" like a "to." And then the fourth paragraph changed "pointing out" to "she stated," and changed "work" to "are" so that it reads "homes are being lost because businesses are locating in homes." And that's all on that page, where it's just seen up. And then on page three, in the second paragraph, change it to read "the commission," not "to" as there were "two," "upzone," and "upzone" is one word, not two words there. And the last paragraph, in the fourth sentence, after "was approved in 1991 for three bedrooms," add "and the septic system for the guest house garage was approved in 2006 for two bedrooms," so that would be for a total of five bedrooms in that one, which I think it would improve for. And that was just left out. And if you just stop and answer any questions. So moving to page four, in the tenth paragraph, the second sentence delete "with" before "five" dag "two." On page five, in that third paragraph, change... So this is, this last paragraph, I want to make sure I'm right about this. It was my understanding, and I did listen to the tape, that we had discussed setting up a work session not for a discussion of the May amendment, but rather a secondary Mount Airy application and sign ordinance. So I just changed that paragraph to reflect that, except it was inaccurate. That it would read, instead of "May amendments," it was zoning ordinance, it would read "work sessions to be scheduled as the header," and then it would read "the commission discussed the review of the Mount Airy application and the sign ordinance," and then after some discussions, how to proceed. And then Mr. Henry requested that Mr. Goff be present for any legal questions.
Okay. Thanks very much for those edits and putting the time in to review the minutes. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt those minutes, inclusive of these non-substantive edits.
I'll move them.
Sorry?
You have two competing questions.
Mr. Light?
I'll move.
Mr. Kohler, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, moving quickly and efficiently, I appreciate it. We're on now to a public comment period that's standard for these meetings. And important here, if anyone who's intending to speak during the public comment period could just raise your hand, it doesn't commit you to anything. We're not taking names, but for time management purposes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. So we'll try to keep the public comment period about 30 minutes maximum, so if you could, try to hold your remarks to approximately three minutes. It looks to be about 10 people who wish to speak. So I'll go ahead and call the public comment period open, and if you wish to speak, raise your hand, and as you come to the microphone, there's an adjustment on the handle, raise it so we can hear you, if you're taller and so forth. And if you are a Rappahannock County resident, important to state your voting district, and everyone should state their name. Who wants to go first?
Nobody.
Go ahead. Ms. Adolphy, please. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and let's just make sure that's at the right height for you.
You got a package of pictures today? I wanted them to be up there, they're here. You should have received them.
I saw them by email, yeah. Yeah.
First one is the bottom of the hill.
Could you just move toward the mic? Thank you very much.
First one's the bottom of the hill, with three blacksmiths behind us going up that narrow little hill. Second one is right in front of somebody's house, Sally's house, right in front of her little sidewalk. And it's our little car, and it's seven feet to the other side of the road. So all the way through this, if you think of what's going to happen when there are more vehicles definitely on this road, and they're going to make it bigger, and other cars take turns passing each other, it's really an issue of safety. As you go along, you see that you're going to have to cut down some old trees if you want to make this a safe road. We really want to start cutting down our old trees. So I thought I'd have a table or a speaker's thing. And worst of all, this is one of the things that we're doing, when I have kids, I've hiked this road many times. My kids have hiked it, everybody I know's hiked it. From the old corn crib up on Woodward Road, you go around that curve like this. It's so steep, you can't see anything. And unless they're going to do a major renovation of that corner, just getting to this Taylor property is a very difficult thing. It's not safe. And then the final picture on the road is looking from down by where the mill is being renovated, where there's going to be more traffic there, and that is in itself an issue. And then the last one, I think, is the entrance into... into the property from 211. I think that's it, I wasn't totally sure if I had the right place. But if I do, have we already got passing or turning lanes guaranteed by VDOT, have they agreed to do that? You're going to have to have something there, especially in September, October, November. When I used to live right on Pearl Lane, right off of 211. And believe me, I used to have to go right in order to go left. So I don't think just to say that traffic from any subdivision will not generate more traffic, that people coming off 211 is a misnomer. So the second thing is, I'd like to emphasize tonight, that every time somebody gets up to discuss this property, they talk about how it's going to be low-income, moderate-income housing. Just because people say it every time doesn't mean it's true. There's no way that that can happen, no matter what the initial offering price is for this property. There's no way that if I buy this property in front of myself five years later, and I say, "I want to be a nice woman, I'm not going to take any profit from it, even though the property around me is very well has gone up." There's no, there's no structure or to, that's been created to make sure that that happens. Third thing is, Ray and I live on the river, on Water Street now, we're off the mountain, on Water Street. And there's no mention of any repair and duffers or taking a look at what will happen when there's more roadway, more roads, more houses. We got a new Board of Supervisors, adopted a new plan last year, I think, having to do with flood insurance. Ray and I have flood insurance because we're on Water Street, and God forbid that old wall should go. So what I would like to say is, I've been coming here since 1983, so I'm a newcomer, right? Mr. Henry, Mr. Frazier, a bunch of you are people who've been here a long time. And every time I hear somebody saying, "Oh, you people, new people come here, you want to change it, what do you want to do that for? You came here because you liked it." Here I am, I'm a newcomer, I'm saying to some of you, some of you people who've been here for a couple of centuries, that you guys want to change it, we want it to stay the same. We left behind those subdivisions. So I think this subdivision is far too dense, as it's proposed, to resonate to our two. It's too dense from a safety sake, just a plain old common sense safety sake. Doesn't make any sense, given what the roads are, and if we can't convince people to come off 211, I'm sure they'll be on Woodward Road. So water in the river, safety. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Adolphy. Next person who wishes to speak during the public comment period, and this can be on any subject, Planning Commission-related preferably. Yeah, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Jones, I live in Sperryville, Virginia. I am an old timer. I have a graveyard on our property, goes back to 1796, with direct descendants, so... Anyway, I've already made my piece, made a statement, and submitted it to all of you. However, I do want to just have one quick little rebuttal to some of the statements that Mike Brown made, where he used some of what I said to say, that we are encouraging development, a little bit higher, denser development, and that would also close some tax loopholes. He mentions that the tax revenues on this property right now in agricultural use is $188, and that were it to be developed, the tax, his estimates, the tax revenue would be $33,000. I just want, and that that would be a boon for the county. I just want to say that currently, that field does not take any trash to Flatwood, it doesn't hit a deer and have to have emergency services, it doesn't have a deputy come out because there's a domestic dispute, et cetera. It uses no services, it's not sending any children to school. The county contribution to a school child is $10,000, so it generates $33,000 a year in taxes. That's only going to pay for three kids in school, and it's all gone. So I just do, I really want to say that residential development on its own, without any other proffers or planning, is not going to be a positive revenue strength. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is Monica Worth, I'm in the Piedmont District. I had a question, I'm coming late to the conversation, and I had a question that I think Ms. Adolphy raised, and I want to just reinforce that, and that's, what is the plan, if it's going to be called affordable housing, for it to be affordable, and to whom, and how do we define affordable housing? Would like to see if the Planning Commission has the ability to add that into the equation in terms of its considerations, and that's really all I have to say.
Thanks very much for being here. Next, please. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Wofford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kate Wofford, I live at 651 Woodward Road. We have driven or walked or biked past this rezoning on Woodward Road that you are considering thousands of times, and this is the first time you're hearing from me, because the truth is, we did not pay much attention at all to what was happening until we got the paper on January 28th. You might remember, in the paper that day, there was a schematic, a site plan, of a straight lot subdivision of two acre parcels across this entire property. And we, my husband and I, were very alarmed to see that site plan. We urge you to deny this rezoning. As you've heard, I'm sure, from many people in previous meetings, and a lot of letters that you've gotten, and your visits out to this spot, this is a spectacular place. It's absolutely beautiful. It's an iconic view. And we in Rappahannock have really high expectations for development. There's very little development in this county. Now, there's very little development that's going to happen. I think if there's one thing that I took away from the, all the discussion and thoughtful consideration around the comp plan update, it's that there's very little development that's going to happen. And most of the controversy was around how much development is very little development. But that means when development does happen, it needs to be innovative, it needs to be thoughtful, it needs to be really well done. So should the applicant choose to come back with an application that includes innovative measures, like clustering potentially, restrictions on house size to truly meet de restrictions in affordable housing needs, design guidelines, so that a development is compatible with the historic village around it, then I would encourage you to consider that application. What's in front of you tonight certainly is not that, and I urge you to deny it and hope that something will come back in that meets our high expectations for development in Rappahannock. Thanks for your service, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Next, please. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Bob Trafton of the Piedmont District, and I live in Sperryville. Just want to talk on two items tonight. I want to represent my support for the commercial district in Sperryville, and specifically the brewery application that's on the docket for tonight under new business. And I also want to speak on my opposition to the rezoning of the Mount Airy Field. I've spoken with, in many of these meetings, I've submitted an email to this group with a number of concerns on that redevelopment. My wife and I live feet from Woodward Road, three feet about, so any car, any vehicle that goes by on that road, we hear, we feel in our house. Any increase to traffic on that road will impact our lives. The current RR5 zoning, I feel, is entirely appropriate for that lot and that parcel, and with its location around the villages of Sperryville. I don't believe increasing the density to R2 is warranted, so I encourage you to decline this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gressinger.
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. At the last meeting, I referenced a question that a person had asked prior to that, it was, what is the benefit to the community changing from five acres to two acres? And at that last meeting, I said the benefit was to be able to provide a more affordable place and places for this county. There have been a lot of studies, there was a whole series of articles about housing that was needed in Rappahannock. There was then a forum on a Zoom call, and about 50 people participated in it, and one of the stories I remember especially was a young lady who had grown up in Rappahannock, graduated from Rappahannock High School, would absolutely love to have her family here. However, she, they have not been able to do it. So she's a schoolteacher in Loudoun County. Her husband has a job there. So what I'm trying to do is say, this kind of housing, I think, would help our county. A lot of people talk about it's adding to the density. Our comprehensive plan asks for development, and I hate that word, because when you say development, people say, "Oh, my gosh, Loudoun County." You talk about affordable housing, people go bananas and think, "Oh, my gosh, low-income houses with trash all around it, poorly maintained." That's not what we're talking about. The state has required us to use the term affordable housing, and that is for middle income, for the teachers, and for fire people, a lot of people. If you drive around Sperryville, you're going to see, in the town, you have two-story buildings that hadn't been family houses before. They've been repurposed into businesses. We do need more housing. And I looked at the, I've driven out there, and I've looked at the spot, and it's absolutely really lovely. It's between Woodward Road and 211. On 211, you have houses and you have some businesses, and so this would be a nice parcel adjoining the village. The thing that you can do, it's called marketing, is you can call it village cottages. You know, it can be, there can be guidelines as to what kind of houses you want to have there, and it would give an opportunity for people to actually have something there. The other thing, you recall the controversy over the cell tower a while back, and it was like, "Oh, my gosh, cell tower." And then it turned out to be, "Oh, my gosh, really?" Because it ended up being pale blue, because people had listened to the people, landowners, adjoining that cell tower property, and they wanted the blue. So when you've listened to everyone as to what we need for our county, I drove out there, and I took a picture about a month ago, and the cell tower was repainted, and so now it's green, and so it's not a blatant horrible thing for our, to our view shed anymore. And I seriously do not think that the housing that's been proposed and the schematic was just an example of what could, could be put there. And I think one of the possibilities was that the one entrance and possibly then another one. And so it's really a pretty, it would be a pretty place, and I think it would be a good, it would not wreck the view shed. That's another thing I want to talk about very quickly. We have 25% of our county in easements. That's because landowners decades ago put their land in easements, so we have these wide open spaces. And so the comprehensive plan is then able to be more effective by channeling growth, and the state says we have to talk about economic growth in our comprehensive plan as well. And so that's another point, that we are paying attention to our comprehensive plan, putting the growth in and around the villages, and leaving the wide open spaces for everyone to enjoy.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Barsky. My challenge here is to see if I know everybody's name. So far, so good. I'm batting a thousand.
Got it.
All right.
Yoko Barsky, Hampton District. I was listening to a lot of comments on this Mount Airy and the last meetings and this meeting, and there are so many oppositions here. And my thought is, right now, in this large piece of nice open land, it's RR5, five acres, so it's, if it's, if the houses are to be built, there will be five houses, right? Instead of 13, in that same area, more or less. So it's not going to be open, open land anyway. Maybe what you can do, and this is one of the first such requests, is that right? This kind of rezoning request? Or has there been precedents like this? Maybe Mr. Sharp knows, but...
I mean, I think there have been, but this is the most recent one.
Most recent one, right. So this will set the precedence, in a way. And I would like to see the commissioners request the applicants to come up with more different options. The one that's shown, the one, the flat or the subdivision plan, is just making the buildable area divided up into two acre lands. There are lots of other options, like other people have noticed. And it's probably a good idea at this point... And it's probably a good idea at this point for the commissioners to request the applicant to come up with several ideas. So then you will know what they have in mind, and that could be part of the proper. So that way, if you come up and somebody decides to build 13 different lots, like the way it's shown, it will look totally different, totally differently than some, there are a lot more creative ways to deal with this. And I think it's a good time to request more detailed information on this. That would ease other people's fears, I think. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Haynes. Got it. And with the additional challenge of masks, this is high-level recognition here.
I think as proposed, we would more likely have 13 more weekenders living at Mount Airy than we would have first responders features and the people that we would like to accommodate. And this is because although we're talking about affordable housing and we're talking about a roadway that would eliminate traffic from Woodward Road, those things aren't actually real. They're ideas. So we really can't depend on them because they're just ideas. They're not reality. They're not proffered, they're not, they're only discussed. I think this application is premature. I've said that before. The applicant has talked about development in 10 years, development in 50 years. And I think that's part of the reason that we can't have something more specific. Because as of today, there's not a specific plan. And the other thing I'd say is, I know there was a question as to the source of data that I provided to you on undeveloped lots, and that is our county commissioner of revenue. And it's information that's available to anyone. Thank you. I'm Sally Haynes, Piedmont District.
I failed to enforce that rule, but thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I just want to say on the record that I live on Woodward Road at 473 Woodward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And for the record, Monica Worth. Yes, ma'am.
As she's approaching, Mr. Chair, you have at least one person on the.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. Ms. Bruce.
I'm Diane Bruce from Piedmont District. And I just want to refute a couple of things that have been said at the various planning commission meetings. One was, I think it was at the public hearing, that the only local or native who spoke in, at that meeting, was Mr. Atkins, who owns property adjacent to the Mount Airy Field. There were then and are tonight at least four other local native Rappahannock residents here. And for some reason, Mr. Henry thought it was important to say that the natives didn't show up to oppose it. But I believe I represent a number of the natives who do oppose this. It's just that typically the natives do not come to these meetings. Regarding the lots that Sally spoke to a few minutes ago, we know that there are hundreds and hundreds of small lots in this county that are unimproved. And just because they're not listed with a realtor does not mean that they're not available to be purchased. I have lived in six different houses in the past 50 years in Rappahannock County. And of the six transactions, six buys, six sales, well, five sales, eight of them, eight of them have been without a realtor. Now, we have three realtors on our board, I believe, and I know that they are a great resource here. But I do not agree that a house has to be listed with a realtor or that a piece of property has to be listed with a realtor to be for sale. And we have hundreds and hundreds of unimproved small lots in this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to comment? Thanks, everyone, for your cooperation and limiting your remarks to, for the most part, three minutes each. So we're doing well here. If I could indulge my colleagues one more time. Within the upcoming agenda item, which?
Mr. Chair, you still have somebody online.
All right, thank you. I'm still not caught up with the times. If there is someone on Zoom who wishes to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand using, is it a button in the upper right-hand corner?
The directions are on the screen for them. I've just asked.
And Mr. Curry, our county administrator, will hopefully identify.
The reviews have been requested to unmute.
Okay, great. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Abby Estia. We are homeowners on 623 Woodward Road in Piedmont District. And wish to quickly comment on the Mount Airy Field rezoning request. My husband Jamie and I are strongly urge the planning commission to deny this request. We feel this application is strongly inadequate in many areas. We feel the density is too much for this particular property. We feel environmental concerns of erosion and sediment runoff have not been addressed, nor the infrastructure concerns of the very narrow road. We do feel the view sheds need to be prioritized. It's one of our favorite spots in Rappahannock County. We call it an exhale spot, where we go and, ah, we just are taken up. And we really urge that this rezoning request gets held to a higher standard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Curry, is there anyone else raising their hand on the Zoom?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And I appreciate, again, your cooperation and limiting the time spent here. But also appreciate all your thoughtful comments. If I could indulge my colleagues one more time within what's now item G, new business, there are three applications, two of which are special use permit applications for tourist homes under 170-60-6K of the zoning ordinance. And I suggest, for time management purposes, that we reverse the order. The Eastums are present, and I'm not sure if the second SUP applicant is here, but I would entertain a motion to just reverse the order and start with the Eastum special use permit application, and then go to number two, and then finally to Veddits and Company Brewing, which is likely going to consume a bit more time.
So moved.
Who made the motion, sorry? Here. And Mr. Sharp seconded. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. So just very quickly, the first application we'll hear is a special use permit application for the Eastums for a tourist home. I believe the location is on Richmond Road. So the process is that the planning commission will hear on a preliminary review basis your application. And at that time, we either can schedule a public hearing before the planning commission if we think it's a complicated application and such a public hearing is necessary, or we can send it immediately onto the Board of Zoning Appeals, either with a recommendation for approval or denial or with no recommendation at all. So that's the process. So from here, next would be before the Board of Zoning Appeals to secure your permit. And so with that, I'll invite Ms. Summers, our zoning administrator, to just walk us through the basic tenets of the application, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just have a proposed to operate a tourist home pursuant to 170-30-60 and 170-60-6K. They will be used, the house is a two-bedroom. Tourist home with no less than two nights, the house being rented, no less than two nights at a time. They will not be serving food to the guests. The health department commented, they're pending. They've communicated with my office that the subject permit inspection is from 1955. The applicant had the subject system pumped out, and the health department is waiting for a report from the company before they can submit their official comments, but they saw no issues. The property is owned by agricultural and conservation and is over 1,600 acres in size.
Certainly meets the minimum acreage requirement for a tourist. Okay, thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Easton, is there anything you want to add or anything we should know at this time? Okay, Ms. Summers, in your opinion, is the application complete? And do you have everything you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the planning commission for the applicants or Ms. Summers?
I have one question for the applicant.
Mr. Sharp, go ahead.
The two-night minimum, what is, what is that intended for? You said two nights minimum?
It's just basically, that's all I really want to work with. That we're holding, that's all I can do. After two minutes.
Yeah, you don't want to turn it away.
You can keep it kind of a, you know, the environment's, you can get some damp overloaded.
Okay. Fair enough.
Any other questions?
Does that mean, yeah, I was wondering about the, it says no less than. You mean no more than?
No, less than.
No, less than, no, well, anyway.
Okay. Well, it's just basically something I can work with. Too much or too little is just a bit.
So in other words, if I wanted three nights, I could do that. And five nights, I could do that. Seven nights.
No, that's only because he's not clean.
Okay, okay. But just not one, not one night.
Good. Any other questions?
Looking at the flat, I'm just seeing that part of the farm at Benvenu is shown on this flat. This is down Richmond Road, just past Lyle Lane, correct?
No. No. 911 address.
1733.
Yeah, it's the first driveway past Williams Tree Service, one down. There's a confusion on that 911 address. It's not past Lyles.
Okay.
Just between Williams Tree Service and the home of Arco.
So it's on, is it on the right or the left?
It's on the right.
On the right, okay. That helps. And, okay, and the septic is 1955. We're waiting on that data to see what condition that's in, correct?
Well, it's actually working. And they said, it passed, but it would be really great if we could have a look at at some point, brought up to date, but it's working.
Yeah, at that age, they tend to go bad.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they do. And Mitch said that she advises that we replace it at some point. They couldn't, she couldn't, they couldn't do it because it is working. But where, yeah, like that's.
But you have 116 acres, so you could, you could do it. Okay, that's all I have.
Great. Any other questions?
Again, just for clarification on that. So what would be the limit on the number of nights you would anticipate?
The more.
How, what's the more? What would be the limit?
A lifetime.
Like, is this a B&amp;B or a rental, I guess?
I think this is an Airbnb.
Airbnb, short-term rental.
Right. And who knows, it's something you can also.
I don't know that it does, but I don't think our.
I don't think there's a restriction.
Nope. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a little statement. I'd like to thank the Eastums for keeping this property together as one big track over these years. And thank you for having an easement on it to protect this vital section of Rappahannock County. And thank you for allowing local business to be on the corner there to grow and serve the needs of Rappahannock. And thank you for letting local people hunt on your property. And thank you for farming it, and thank you for feeding us. And I think this house, where it sits, will bother nobody. I think it will be a great amenity to the county and a great complement to your farming operation, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Great, well said. Any final comments from my colleagues?
I'll make a motion if we pass it on with the recommendation of approval.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, that's Mr. Henry making a motion to pass the special use permit application onto the Board of Zoning Appeals. And Mr. Light seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? With the recommendation of approval. And hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Enjoy the, enjoy the snow. All right, going in reverse order with the current agenda now amended twice, we're on to a second special use permit application. And I'm not sure if the applicant, I believe is pronounced Vitali. Ms. Summers, do you know if the applicant is here?
Her rental manager may be on Zoom, Patricia.
Yes. Okay, great. All right, Ms. Summers, why don't you go ahead and just summarize for us the application? And importantly, if you could just let us know at the end how you feel about the completeness of the application materials?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, Mrs. Hilo, which operates a three-bedroom tourist home. She's not using the home herself. The property is located at 40 Cedar Running Lane in Sperryville. It's 30, plus 30.8 acres. It is in conservation. Her property manager, Patricia, will oversee the rental of the property. The health department commented that the subject was approved by their office in 2003 for three bedrooms. A recent site visit to the property revealed that a large tree fallen over near the trenches that hold where the roots have been. They recommended that they fix this. They have done so. They also recommended annual sample water tests to be done to check the availability of drinking water well. And it's in my opinion that this application is complete.
Okay, Ms. Obergauck, I understand you're on Zoom. Is there anything you want to add on behalf of the applicant?
No, thank you. And I mean, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Summers, the acreage of the property again?
It is 30.8045 acres.
Okay, great. Any questions from my colleagues?
I have a question.
Ms. Obergauck, is, how many bedrooms are in this house?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute it. We currently, there's three bedrooms.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler. Ms. Ishi?
Yes, hi, Patricia. So I actually drove up that, and had I had any idea how steep and I see that road was, I might not have done so. It's a beautiful spot, I will say. But, so I assume you have the requisite 50-foot wide easement for that road? And how many other houses are on that road?
There's only one other property.
And I see you've notified those neighbors and they have no objection, I assume?
We haven't heard of any, no. She's been in contact with them and they've discussed like maintenance-related things and, you know, care of the driveway and of the property. And I'm not, I'm not aware of any objection that they have.
Okay. And thank you. In the, what was the last question? Oh, so she is, she, she's, she doesn't live there full-time, though? This is not a.
She's not, no, she doesn't live here full-time. She's in California.
Okay, so how often, just out of curiosity, how often does she, does she tend to come out here? Is this?
So she purchased the property just before everything happened with COVID. So I think her intent was to be here, you know, every couple of months. She doesn't work in DC, so she plans to use the house when she's here for business in DC. But obviously with COVID, you know, she hasn't been able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Last question for Ms. Summers and Mr. Curry. I believe it's part of the May amendments. We modified the requirements for road and changed the 50-foot rideaway requirement? Could someone check me on that?
Yes, sir. I'm looking at those right now. They are on Co-Publishing, our online co-publishing site. They do an updated May amendments already in effect for this application. That's section, which is 170-60-6K and then six, eliminated the requirement for 50-foot rideaway with 5 foot width and replaced it. It basically says, public roads, private roads. It basically says, "Public roads, private roads, or public roads other than primary state or secondary road serving tourist homes and bed and breakfasts shall meet the standards for type-two roads set forth in 17086, 17087, and is shown in Appendix 8-1 to the Rappahannock County Subdivision Orbits."
Thank you, Gary. I guess the question then is whether there's been any demonstration that this road meets those requirements?
Is there, Ms. Summers, is there anything in the application that goes, that goes to the question of?
Yes, sir.
So is that, that's the right-of-way to the property that has to meet that criteria, not the road to the?
The roads, private roads or public roads other than primary or state secondary roads serving tourist homes and bed and breakfasts. So if you're on a primary state secondary road, you're fine. If you're not on a primary or state secondary road, then you need to meet certain standards.
But that's not the driveway, that's just the access.
If it's a private drive, I.
Private is okay.
So if you have direct access to a public road.
This is a shared, this is not a, this is a, a shared road. In a right-of-way, so I think it does meet the conditions that the, that the entrance road would. This is precisely the situation, I believe, that the, that was intended to be addressed by that change.
So we're actually talking about the quality of the road?
Yes.
So not just the, correct?
So thank you for bringing that up, Gary. So I, as I said, I drove up, I don't know if Patricia can respond, but to the driveway that leads, the long, steep driveway that leads up to two separate houses is coming off of Woodard Road. But you're saying that the driveway going up to the house has got a second use on it? I don't recall that change. I don't recall the specifics of that.
But it's not a shared road?
It's just a shared driveway. It looks like.
So that would probably have to meet the criteria.
I don't know if it'll make a difference, but as I recall, both properties have road frontage. They share a road which goes from one property to the other and then back on the other one again.
Oh.
It's a little confusing.
Ms. Summers gave me a flat of the property. A little bit challenging here. Part of it appears to be a 20-foot right-of-way. Another part might be 24 feet. It does appear to have road frontage, but the access is, is, is by the right-of-way. And that's why there's a 911 address with running cedar. So, Mr. Chairman, want to see that?
Actually, I draw my statement a moment ago that they won't have road frontage. I'm not convinced that the subject property has road frontage. It's the bottom, I believe it's the bottom lot bill on the right that you can only see a portion of.
But this one says the 30.8045, the middle ones. You see the acreage? Below the arrow.
Show me where you.
That's actually my rolling of approximate driveway, a pretty good flat.
I think the plat may not be the real operative. I mean, again, I don't think we've really tested these, these changes too frequently yet, if at all yet. But it seems to me that what we did was basically say that this property is accessed on Running Cedar Lane. Its address is Running Cedar Lane, then Running Cedar Lane needs to meet the Class II requirements. That was certainly, I believe, the intent of the change that we made. Now, whether we've ironed that out or how that applies here strikes me as, maybe we're not quite prepared to address that. But I think it's important that we understand the new, the new requirements.
Mr. Light, this is a rare occasion where I agree with you.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, this just kind of brings up the, again, the, the situation we, we run into all the time with these tourist homes is that we have this preliminary hearing and then we have the option of a hearing at our level, but we've just been moving them on to the BZA. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know how. I, I continue to feel that that doesn't give adequate notice to the public of what we're going to do. They, they, they don't expect a hearing, but then we jump ahead without hearing. So we should just get rid of this preliminary hearing, as I've said before, in my opinion. But nonetheless, the question is, if there's a, if there's a substantial question like this, you know, do we just move it on to the BZA or?
My thought on that matter, if I may, is that the application is not complete if it doesn't demonstrate compliance with the requirement.
So why don't we return to them an answer that we need to get a determination or evidence that it meets that requirement?
So along that same lines, since we're implementing a, a new part of the ordinance here, I guess we need to be clear. We're going to have a number of these things in the future. And we have to be clear on how do we determine that, that the road standards here is, is correct. And the question there is whether or not there's anybody in the county government that can make a statement that yes, this road is built to those standards. Or does the applicant simply have to go with a copy of what's required to a surveyor, an engineer? Have him look at the road and say, yes, the road defines the standards. And I guess the only person maybe that would be qualified in our government, local, would be the erosion control person. And that's, that's the discussion. I know he's the one, I think, that reviews erosion control on roads. And I think now that roads have to be engineered that's greater than 1,500 feet, 1,500 feet.
So they make a plan and make it sustainable.
Yeah. So, you know, they, they have some experience looking at the profiles of things like this and whether or not we want to rely upon a in-house person or simply have an outside person state to us that the road is that type. So that's the discussion I have.
Okay.
If I may, I would like to keep this as simple as it can be. My suggestion is that we, at least at this time until we deal with a few more of these, we request that the applicant basically include the measurements. As I recall, the, the width of the cut, road cut and the, and the size of the, of the ditches is more or less the standard. There may be additional ones. And so it seems to me that most of these would be clear from pretty simple measurements. So I'm not inclined to make the, require that the applicant get some kind of engineering piece, at least for a preliminary review, but at least give us some further evidence of the measurement of the width of the road and the gutters. And then if we're satisfied, we can accept it. If, if there's questions, then we could request a, a more substantial review, I think. That's how I would propose we address it.
Okay, so perhaps the path forward, because I, I do think it's, you all were involved in, in those amendments and have a good handle on them. I think the path forward might be to just table this until our March meeting. And Mr. Light, you or I could work with Ms. Summers to make sure we're communicating clearly with the applicant and that we're setting expectations for what additional information we need and we can then address this in March.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, when we deal with these applications, we ask for the professional that has expertise in fields to do the work.
Okay.
We have that with the Health Department.
Sure.
Mitch goes out, looks at it, and we ask people with expertise to address these issues. The Building Department on, on homes. So the typical homeowner, property owner does not know what they're looking at.
Okay.
They don't know the depth of the ditches. They just want, they want to say, yes, everything's okay. Now, we had statements here today that this is a 50-foot right-of-way. It may not be based upon this plat. So there's an example, and I believe the lady on the phone is a real estate agent. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, because it's not clear whether it's a 50-foot right-of-way and that's not important. But there's an example of how an error can happen. I think at the very least, if we have the Health Department look at a drain field, we should have the erosion control person look at the road.
Okay, yeah, and I, and I agree with you. And so I think working with county staff, including Ms. Summers, we can come up with a very specific plan to make sure that we get objective, call it third-party information so we can make a reasoned judgment on the fact, basis of the facts, and that takes the applicant out of the equation.
And this was important enough to note that we did an ordinance change on it.
Right, agree.
So if we did an ordinance change, we should hold it to a high standard of equal opportunity.
Okay.
But if that's all that's required, can the applicant just bring that information back to us next month with the professionals?
I, I think that's, that's, that would be the idea, right? So we have a month between now and our next meeting and, and certainly we owe to the applicant to give clear instructions on why we're, why we're pausing. And then furthermore, how we, how we remedy the outstanding questions. Any other discussion? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Just a quick question. Is it any other questions that would need to resolve the honor? That we can think of while we're doing?
No, they had, they had the question of this, of the tree in the septic, I guess, but they were going to fix that. Isn't that this one? Yeah, the tree had fallen over near the.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's already recognized, yeah. Okay.
I can't think of any other changes, otherwise this seems pretty straightforward. But with that new requirement, I do think it's, it's the worst one out of the box here, so we should get it right.
Okay.
So I, I move that we table this in order to give the applicant time to demonstrate that the, that the property meets the, the road requirements.
And I would just say, following, following the instruction of county staff and.
Following, yeah, following the guidance provided by county staff.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second for Mr. Light's motion? Mr. Kohler, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. And Ms. Obergang, we will, Ms. Summers or Mr. Light or I will be back in touch with you and the applicant shortly. Thank you. One sec. Oh, okay. All right, thank you for your patience. We're now moving on to the third and final preliminary review under new business. And this is an application for a special exception permit. And just at a high level, the applicants who would be putting a business in a zoned highway commercial property are required by our ordinance to seek a special exception for their proposed use on that property, which is a small brewery. Again, just for the applicants, this is a preliminary review of the application. And depending on what we do tonight, the next step would be, you would go before the Board of Supervisors who make determinations on special exception permit applications. So with that, I'll invite our zoning administrator to introduce your application. And then if you wish to state anything to our group, you're welcome to do so once she's completed her overview. Ms. Summers?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to operate a brewery which is 17036F and 17067E. The property is located at 11961 Lee Highway, Sperryville, and is .4 acres in size. The property is zoned highway commercial. The brewery will operate a 3.5 barrel system which can produce up to about 100 gallons per year. It is expected, however, this capacity will only be reached as the brewery grows. The manufacturing of breweries will be 24/7. The hours of tax room operation and retail sales of breweries to take home will be Friday from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturdays and Sundays from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for 12 months of the year. The brewery will provide 600 square feet of public space for the tasting room, two public grass rooms, and a rear alcohol beer garden. I will note the property is located in a club lane. The Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority commented that at their December 10th meeting, they approved the sewer use of the brewery producing no more than 14,700 gallons per year. The Sewer Authority will issue a permit detailing the conditions, a purchase of two additional commercial EDUs will be required. The Health Department commented that as there is standing, no food will be served at the proposed brewery. Breweries without food service fall under purview of the Virginia Department of Agricultural and Consumer Services. And applicants have therefore been referred to the local inspector for further guidance. A water questionnaire has been submitted at the request of the Health Department and forwarded to the Office of Drinking Water in order to determine whether the water supply will fall under the Office of Drinking Water or not. During VDOT's first review of this application, they left comments that needed to be addressed, such as parking. They clearly declined entrance, projected track regeneration and entrance design. Responses were provided back to VDOT and a drafted parking plan was provided. That interaction is still continuing with VDOT to get their approval.
I have one question, maybe one clarification.
Why, why don't we go ahead and just maybe invite?
Just about her, see. When you say 500 gallons per year, I think we're actually meaning 500 barrels.
Barrels. Barrels.
Twenty, so that's 30, 15,000 gallons? What's a barrel?
Thirty-one gallons.
Thirty-one. Okay, okay, so that's.
31,000.
31,000.
Okay. Ms. Summers, anything else?
Yes.
Not in front of, okay, and so we would invite the applicants, if they want to introduce a project or say anything, please approach the microphone, just so everyone can hear.
Can I stand?
It'd be better if you came up here, just because there are people on Zoom, if you don't mind. Thank you. And you'll definitely need to raise the microphone.
That's as high as it goes. Hey, Robert Chapman, Piedmont District. Thank you for your hospitality this evening. Greatly appreciated. And thank you, Chairman Whitson, for your leadership. It's, it's my honor to introduce the brewery owners of Viditzen Co. We have Greg Randall and his wife interpreting tonight and business partner Joey Seifner. You know, they, they will be operating the brewery. So tonight, I'm here kind of as an introductory capacity and to answer any questions about the property. Brewing is their world. I know nothing about it, other than I like to drink beer. So thank you for your time.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. And with that, oh, sorry.
Hello, my name is Joey Seifner. I'm one of the co-founders of the brewery company. Our goal to have 75% retail distribution and 25% tax room. Okay, for the first year, we're going to have all retail distribution and no tax room. In the second year, we will start our tax room, but our primary source of business, the retail distribution. Once we have a tax room, it's more of a tasting room. People will come in, it's socialized, and they could, if they want nice beer, they will bring them home with them. The purpose of having this brewery, I've been a lover of beer for many years. I've had previous visions on personal level myself, but I've always wanted to have a brewery in the country, out in the mountains, and I thought beer would be a very good location. It's more about community support and providing shop opportunities for people with disabilities. That people and all level of disability people work with the brewery and be connected with the community for the long term. I'm a financial operator for the business, and I brought right here with me. I'm a financial operator for the business, and I brought right here with me is the chief operator operator. He had a twisted idea of how the business would go for the start, for the short term and the long term, and I'm very pleased to select brewery bill at the location for the taproom of this brewery for the company. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify, if I understand correctly, I want to make sure I get the ratio correctly. So at maximum production output, you're proposing 500 barrels a year? And if I understood you correctly, you're projecting 25% onsite consumption and 75% distribution? Or do I have that backwards?
I project a taproom.
Okay.
75% taproom. And I understand distribution.
Okay.
And I'll imagine that five barrels is real.
Okay, 500 barrels. So you're, at the maximum, you're talking about 125 barrels that would be dedicated to taproom consumption onsite?
This term.
More or less?
That's a lot.
More or less? Okay, that helps a lot. Thank you.
How many gallons is that?
31 gallons per barrel. And I think, I think an important data point, because we do have this developing cluster economy, now this would be the third brewery in that vicinity. I did some research, Pendroid, which is now located on 522, their maximum production capacity currently is somewhere in the range of 375 to 400 barrels. Hopkins Ordinary, which is a much smaller operation, their maximum production capacity slash output is approximately 90 to 100 barrels per year. And for me, the key question here, given that property, is production output linked to parking capacity? And so the 25% onsite consumption number is important. Put in perspective, Hopkins Ordinary has 21 parking spaces, two which are for personal use, six which are for their overnight accommodations, so net, call it, 21 minus 13 parking spots for roughly 100 barrels of onsite production consumption a year. And Pendroid, obviously, with their new setup, has basically unlimited parking with about 400 barrels of production per year. So to just, I think it's useful to keep this in perspective. If we're following the numbers presented, it would be about 125 barrels with, well, we can talk about parking in a minute, I'm sure there will be a lot of questions. Any questions from my colleagues? That's all I really had, and I apologize for jumping in.
Are you, are you talking about production, only production for the first year? And then taproom the second year?
Yes.
I do.
We pick up all of it. Well, this is fine online.
Distribution by online. Let me tell you.
I have a question, maybe for Robert, maybe. Okay, so what I'm understanding is there's one parcel that is the subject of this application?
Yes, this application is for one parcel, 36.
Okay.
Sue's 38. It's an existing structure or not existing?
No, I got that. But, okay, so the next question is, most of the parking is on the other parcel?
Correct.
So my question there, and I don't know quite how this would be handled, because it seems like it relies upon both parcels to function, so, I mean, there's, looks like there's four spaces on the parcel we're talking about, and several, I don't know how many it is, 12 or, 12 or more on the adjacent parcel. So that's just my question, is how do you, since you're giving, it's depending on both parcels, maybe it's not a question for you, maybe it's a question for the planning commission, but would that not be important, that both parcels somehow be involved?
I believe parking for one use on the area property, with both properties under the same ownership.
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Yeah.
But you would, you would never alienate that other property?
Correct.
So how would we, would we tie them together somehow?
It's by writing the PIN number, attaching that number on the application.
On both, I mean, in other words, both, both, that's parcel, yeah. And, I mean, it does seem like both parcels should be the subject of this application, I would think.
I don't see any way of otherwise guaranteeing adequate parking.
Correct. Yeah, so that's just, I mean, I noticed it was very specific to the one parcel, but I just want to make sure that it's not excluding the other parcel.
And for what it's worth, if I may, we've drawn 12 parking spaces there, we could probably double that, given the depth of the parcel.
But so the other question is, then, there's a potential for some other use on that adjoining property, so...
Well, there's a parking lot there.
No, but I mean, I think you were considering building a building back behind the parking.
Passants.
Oh, you're not doing that anymore?
Well, it's not part of this application, yeah.
Okay. But in other words, there could be a use come to that next property, and how would the parking be? Anyway.
To me, to me, the question at hand is, how do we ensure adequate parking for this application? And that, I think, the discussion around somehow requiring that the parking on the other lot, if that's what we're depending on, be guaranteed, is critical. And if there's some other future use for that second parcel, when we face that, or when whoever faces that, they will see that it's already got some burden to have a parking lot on it, and we'll deal with that at that time.
Yeah, that's logical. Okay. So this current drawing, Robert, has how many parking spots?
Fifteen.
So we have 12. It's looking like with conversations with VDOT, the three in front will not be, will not work if VDOT does not want cars backing into 211, which is understandable, but, you know, those buildings have been here a long time, so we'll likely turn that into a grass area. And then the one entrance for the parking lot will be kind of as shown, and then there is a gravel entrance to the right of the building, kind of a lane between the two parcels. That would be for staff parking and maybe some service.
How many employees will you have?
Four people, sorry, wait.
Four people, sorry.
And after decreased production, we'll hire more people.
There's an increased production, we'll hire more people.
So on weekends, when you're open for retail sales, what will be your number of employees on weekend sales?
Probably two.
Probably two.
There's not three in a row on weekends.
Okay.
I would say, if you went for a period, it's slow, but if someone period, take aside, we'll come working in summer, and we'll work for...
Four people in summer.
Okay. So the 600-foot tasting room, what's the capacity of customers in that tasting room?
Six hundred, including the restrooms and the others, I'm trying to ask to clarify that.
About 24 people.
24? Maximum capacity. And then you mentioned a beer garden also, with, I think in the application, with a maximum capacity.
I've got the outside too.
Twenty.
So we probably have another 20 people. And then there's about 50 people in the middle for this side of the outside.
Two people in the most inside and outside.
So if you, if you have 50 people, and you've got 12 parking places, and you've got three employees, maybe there goes three parking places, so you're down to nine parking places for 50 people. And that's, that's, that's way short. I mean, that's, and it seems like if you have good beer, you're going to have success, and you have a good location, that people drive by, easy to get to, good visibility, that I think you're going to have good success there. And I think we have to recognize that you're going to be successful going in and playing for parking. Otherwise, you're going to have people parking in front of neighbors, you're going to have people stopping on 211, and it's going to be like Warrington, with people backing up out on the bypass to go through a drive-through. So I think parking here is going to be very, very critical. And I think, too, that it seems like most breweries, from time to time, will, you know, have some activity, whether it's a food truck, or whether it's a venue of some light music or something, and, I mean, maybe you'll never have these, but if you ever decide to do it, you'll definitely draw more people. So I think the real item here is parking. Also, looking at the sketch up here, it looks like, I think, the parking lot is listed as gravel. And, you know, I know that offers some absorption for water, but being adjacent to 211 there, I'm very concerned that, you know, with the amount of parking that you have there, with any amount of water, you're going to have water washing out onto 211 with gravel, and you're going to have, you know, potential erosion going on out onto the public right-of-way that will not be good. So I think you already found some issues with the highway department, and we have concerns with the parking, and I think we need to make sure that you have enough space to grow into in terms of parking. And I wouldn't want you to go to the expense of an excessive amount of parking place, but at least have a buffer that if you find with your success you need more parking, that you can grow into. So we often have discussions at what point in time do we need somewhat of a, you know, professional site plan done to delineate parking, correct size parking, erosion items, and things like this. And I think this property here rises up to a standard where we should think about whether this needs more of an elevated site plan than what we're looking at.
Thank you, those are all good comments. Mr. Archer, do you, do you want to say anything about whether there's potential for Plan B on the parking front? Because I agree with Mr. Henry, I approached it differently, I was just thinking comparatively to other brewery operations, where this would fit in terms of production and parking, but he, I think, very wisely addressed it from an employee and then tasting room capacity standpoint. I just welcome your comments.
Sure, so as I mentioned before, we've got 12 spaces there on the left. If we drop the three in front, because VDOT's talking about this, as I said earlier, we can double that, given the depth of the parcel, so that's probably about 24 spaces, might even be able to cram a little bit more further back. There are, there is land further down the street that might be rentable, I haven't discussed that with every property owners, but that might be an option, looks at open fields. Speaking of the gravel, we do want to keep it a permeable surface in terms of cost, but also drainage. If you could here to look at the property, it's going to be graded in such a way that there's, there's no way for gravel to wash into 211. The highway is high in that section, and talking with VDOT now to rebuild the shoulder endwards, so that's something we'll be doing. Basically, VDOT will have kind of final say on the entrance, grading, on the front depth, the radius to the entrance, all these sorts of things, which we're working with on. You know, but VDOT has its connect F design standards, which will do something, and so all of these issues will be addressed, and certainly parking will be an issue, I think we can double what's there, no problem.
If you were to double it, were you proposing, at least using this drawing, that it would go in the back, or?
Sure, so take the parking lot to the left there, as you see it, and just go straight back to it, and then develop spaces. There's quite a bit of space. There are deep parcels, you do run into hill back there, and certainly you can, go from start moving to the mountainside, but there is enough space to, the size of a lot.
Other questions, concerns? Yeah, Mr. White?
Also, to clarify, on the 600 square feet, is that just for the tasting room? The way it's worded, it implies that that includes the restrooms and the beer garden, but I assume that's just the indoor space? Could you clarify?
I can probably speak to that. That's, the 600 square feet, the tasting room is 18 by 30, so it's just under 600. That does not include the bathrooms.
Thank you. And also, I noticed that the Health Department had the assumption that you would not be serving food, but that was not clear in the application, assumed that you're, that's good, okay. And I don't know if this is a question for you or not, but I think it's worth noting, I believe Ms. Summers recommended that there be, maybe it was in the application, I didn't see it, but I know there was a discussion about limiting the number of patrons in the different spaces, and I guess, my question is, how do you do that?
Right, particularly in the beer garden, it said you had limited to 20, and I know certainly, right now during the pandemic, you can do that, because everyone needs to be seated, but assuming we get back to normal on a beautiful fall day, how do you, it's a great question, I had the same one, how do you, how do you cut people off?
I think the short answer is through parking, if the law's...
Yeah.
I don't have any other further questions at this time.
I have some questions. Those were, this has been very helpful questions, because I have a lot to, lot to take in on this proposal. For me, partly, I want to make sure I understand what you're physically doing, so looking at, in your application, the picture of the existing structure, which I'm familiar with, is your plan to leave that structure in place and just cut off the front porch? Or are you tearing it down completely and putting a new structure, or what are you doing?
So we're maintaining the existing structure, there wasn't a front porch, that square footage is going up back, so we're maintaining the square footage of the existing building, and actually making the building safer from, from VDOT's point of view, they just kind of gave us some points there. Currently, you could build the porch that was on there today, you could build that structure today, so we are trying to work with what we have.
And so the adjacent property, that's where the old house that's going to come down? That's what that is? And so, so the beer garden is presumably going to go where you've got green lawn shown on that in the back? Is that for that?
Directly behind the structure in the red, yes.
So any additional parking would be going on the left side, back, and the beer garden would be on the right?
Right.
Behind the building?
There's some, there's some interesting hill slopes there, there's a terrace area that could be used in the beer garden too.
Oh, right. And I know VDOT is having you look at a number of these questions, but, you know, you, it is kind of right across from Main Street, so you have cars coming out of Main Street on that really tight intersection there, and this is not quite immediately across, but there would be, there would be competition between, on a busy fall day. So I'd be interested in seeing what, you know, what happens with, especially as they say, you're not, that building is not far off the road at all, so how would, how would that competition between cars coming off of Thornton Gap Church Road, and coming off Main Street, and coming straight down 211, or coming the other way? There's a lot, there's going to be a lot of competition for space there, so I'd love to understand that.
So VDOT's, and except, doesn't have standards for intersections and entrances, and this one will exceed standards. VDOT... VDOT, if not here, wants entrances right for all intersections, and this is how, with plants like this, and as they've done in the past. The main thing VDOT is concerned with is making a clearly delineating entrance, not compounding entrances right next to them, and so that's what we're working through with them right now.
So, um, thank you, Archer, so, the floodplain issue, so you already have, I mean, you have impervious surfaces there already, you've got a house with a roof, but then it's, then it's a lot of vegetation on that property, those two parcels. So, yeah, I don't know quite how to address the question, maybe others on the commission can, can help with this, of, of how much new impervious surface might be created. I know that, you know, there are, there are, there is a lot of, there are a lot of flooding issues right there, properties right there, as you, as you well know, you know, have a lot of flooding and high rate events, and when it gets really bad, then there's significant flooding. So anytime we're adding impervious surface right there, I think it's, it's helpful to know what, if there's any offsetting of impervious surface, or, or any way to do that, maybe, I don't, I don't know.
Aren't you removing a building with an impervious roof?
They are doing that, yeah.
I would, I would say we're net impervious.
Well, you're gonna be creating a gravel driveway all the way back, and, and putting a beer garden where there's vegetation now, so I'm not positive that's gonna be how it works out, but it may be, I just, I just, I, I, that's a question. And, uh, so it's .4 acres, but you're utilizing the appropriate outdoor, so that increases the acreage, okay? I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Sorry. Please.
The, does Vetit's, the LLC own both these properties? I'm not clear on that.
No, no.
So, I'm the property owner, and the LLC that I own owns both of those properties, Vetit's is gonna be tenants.
And are the little, the little circles I see with the little triangles pointing each other on there, are those, are those flood elevations?
Those are actually property lines from a survey done by, by the Long Gardener or Mr. Clark. Those were just put there for VDOT certification.
Well, these are, I'm talking about the little ones that are little circle with little two little triangles, and on the black triangles are like zero points, zero.
You're on, you're on another.
More than.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, those are, those are elevations.
Those are flood elevations?
Yeah. Take the datum off of the highway.
Right, okay. And it would be helpful, I think, at some point to have a topo, so we can see how that parking, if it's going to extend, would work. And you do have, and is this, this actually does front on 211, it is not, do you own 2, 211?
Yes.
There's no other property that comes across the road and is owned by someone else? Did you have a right-of-way or? And the well, is that, is that well, I'm presuming that's the well that will be producing the water?
So, there's two, yep, sorry. There are two wells on the property that will have, that has the brewery structure. One is 418, and the second well is 140.
They have, kind of, what kind of a flow, do you know, or I'm just curious?
Uh, the 140-foot well is, we did a drawdown with Northern Virginia Beer Land, it was three gallons per minute, and I guess we let it run for, it would run for an hour, I think, that was what I was, and the, the well guy said it was actually really clear water, remarkably as clean as it is at his house. Certainly, with brewing, you like hard water, but all the water will filter, let it drop with the filter, no matter what.
Right, so we'd be using both wells to, for production. I don't have any other questions right now.
Good questions, and I, I'll just go back to my, my comments at the outset, I, I immediately do have concern with parking capacity, Mr. Henry's reinforced that, and I don't know if, aside from all the other non-parking related questions, suppose if anyone else has anything further for the applicants right now?
Is it, is this an all or nothing type of application? I mean, can this be piecemealed? I'd like to see him get started. The hangup seems to be, is the parking.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're gonna be talking about production for a year, I mean, how many cars, how many spots do they need just to produce beer and get their, get their beer out there?
Yeah, but you can't really have them have a long-term plan, that just because they started in a year, they still have to have it figured out ahead of time.
We're not dealing with food now either, but they might come back for that.
Well, they should have the minimum parking for what they might do, I would say.
They very well could.
What they plan to do, they should have the minimum parking for, which is to have a 600 square foot pub and a beer garden. Even if, even if they don't start it right away, they still would need the parking. So, that's what they're applying for.
So, the, the proper approach here, there, there's so many issues going on here with the parking, with the water, and water in terms of rain and runoff, you got the locations of the well where we really don't know, we got the size of the, of the beer garden, we know it's gonna seat 20 people, or in a total capacity of 50 people, and future parking, and all these things, and this, this is a very complicated application, and also, this is the beginning of a new life for this property. Now, it may be a brewery here for the next 30, 40 years, it may not be, but if it's not, it's gonna have another use, whether it's a brewery, or somebody's gonna wanna do a restaurant, or a, a wine tasting, bakery, or whatever. So, this is the beginning of a new life here, and I'm very much in favor of this use, and I want to see them get this use. But I think we're at a point now where we need to do, do good planning, know exactly what we're talking about, VDOT can see exactly what's being proposed, and they can say exactly this is okay, and we need to see adequate parking, future parking, and the only thing, only way to address these things is with a site plan. And we need to see that the parking places are correct size, setbacks are met, these kind of things. We need a detailed site plan, you know, in a lot of counties, in towns, municipalities, you not only do a site plan, but you bond all the improvements that need to be done. I'm not looking to go to that extent of bonding or anything like that, but I really do think that we need a site plan, and I'm, I'm in favor of this, I just need to see everything black and white so that the community, the board, the future users can see that everything was done per plan, was correct, and if anything happens in the future, you know, we have to show that our plan was followed, and there's just too many things here that could go wrong without a site plan. So, I think the only way we can move forward is with a site plan.
And, and I should just mention, so you don't feel defeated, the, the other two breweries, the other two breweries in Sperryville, I was involved in on the front end of those projects as part of the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority, and those applicants, at least from a wastewater treatment perspective, had to jump through a lot of hoops, and I think in the end, it, it made everyone's life better. And so, Mr. Henry's right, we, we want to make sure this is done correctly, the location is inherently difficult, and we also want to preserve public safety, obviously, that's a major concern, so, it's part of the process, we also want, we want to operate good government here and, and not stand in your way, but we have to do our job also. So, Mr. Henry, do you want to put all that in the form of a motion, or?
Sure, I, I make a motion, I can table the application to give opportunity for the applicants to formulate a site plan, addressing parking, the entrance, erosion issues, a site plan to illustrate the floodplain area, the wells, some topo of the site, particularly in the rear, and to bring it back to us for consideration.
Okay, thank you for that.
If I may, I believe, I believe one part of our, our ordinance has specifications for site plans, could we, should we be referencing those? Maybe someone could help me out on that.
Mr. Chair, I have the ordinance in front of me, another part of the main amendments that you all adopted, I'm sure you're aware of, allow zoning administrator to not require a full site plan if she deems it appropriate, but in those cases, a minimal site plan must be submitted meeting the requirements of 170-57B and C. Those requirements are essentially what were provided by the applicants. However, it says, provided however that any other information for a full site plan may be required, if requested by the Board PCA or permission, notwithstanding that it was waived by the zoning administrator. So, the requirements for a site plan are in 170-121, and they're very, very clearly laid, laid out what is required, and you can require everything that's included in 170-121, or only some additional items in addition to 170-57B and C, as you so desire.
Yes, Mr. Henry, I, I'm not sure what I've done to you with that, but, I'm, just for the record, also, I'm agreeing with you for the second time tonight, but.
So, Mr. Curry, you have, you're right on the leading edge of the ordinance there, at your fingertips, so, with, with what I said, what does that fall in, in terms of the two levels of the site plan that you're looking at?
Probably between both.
170-121 is a full engineered site plan.
That's what you're seeking.
So, my statements fell into that category?
I would say yes.
Okay, that's what we need now.
I would just, perhaps you could just state, state that you're, you're seeking a site plan as, as contemplated under 170-121.
121.
Mr. Curry, would that cover us then?
Yes, so the, the use table, 170-36, has an X for site plan stating that it's required, however, zoning administrator has apparently waived that requirement for the purposes of special exception, not necessarily for the purpose of constructing the use after the special exception. But if the Planning Commission thinks that a site plan is needed for you to determine whether a special exception is appropriate, you can acquire that next time.
That was 170 dash?
121.
170-57E is where that requirement, we have new language, 170-121, if 120, it has all of the site plan requirements.
Try that again, Mr. Curry?
Yeah.
We, we're just trying to formulate a motion.
All you have to do is say site plan, that is clearly referencing the ordinance.
Okay.
Say they need to do a site plan, they need to do a site plan.
They need to do a site plan. So, I make a motion, recommend a motion that the applicant come back to us with a site plan per 170-121, per 170-57E.
I will second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Henry, and Mr. White seconded his motion seeking a site plan under those provisions of the zoning ordinance, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, I, I, I think that's probably right, I hate to have to make them go through that, but I think we need that here, and I'm just looking at the, the aerial view of the property, and I don't know, I can't tell from this how much of that is steep slope, but I, I know those are very steep slopes coming down there, and there's a lot of runoff in heavy rains, and you've got a lot of tree cover right now that probably is absorbing a lot of runoff, so I, I hope and assume your site plan may address issues such as, as how much vegetation you would be removing and effects on, on runoff.
And, and Mr. Archer, one thing I'll say is we'll endeavor, just from a county staff perspective, to communicate clearly to you the expectations for this, so there's no gray area or, or questions. Yeah, go ahead if you have a comment.
There is a bit of gray area, can the commission quantify how many parking spaces are required, because I don't believe we're seeing that.
Well, let's, we'll look at that.
Well, okay, if we could, I don't, I don't want to keep moving around and around, can you say 12 spaces, you can say 24, and?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're gonna quantify that right now, and, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna try to move efficiently here, and I recognize it's, it's frustr, it's frustrating to pause, but we have our next regulatory scheduled meeting in March, and we'll, we'll work with you to try to sort, follow this out.
I, I wonder if the approach could be, show as many as is practical, because I think you could maximize the amount of parking spaces that you can provide.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Chapman, I think you got two, two things going on here in terms of parking. Parking's gonna be somewhat determined by the size of the bill. Secondly, you got an outside area here that the beer garden, and, and the applicant said he anticipated 50 people. So, you know, I think you got two calculations here of, of parking going on, I want adequate parking spaces. So, if, if, if the, if the owners think they're gonna have 50 people, then you, you need to have parking for 50 people, you know? If he says he's, he's just gonna have 20, then you're gonna have a max capacity of 20. So, we're gonna look at the parking places and match the capacity up with what you can offer for parking, so, don't go short.
Okay. Well, okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, motion on the table, and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your patience for being here tonight. If we could just take a five-minute break, and then we'll move on to the last main agenda item, thank you.
We can get through a little bit. Yeah.
We'll be looking for a statement.
Maybe sooner, we, you know, we've been through this.
The rest of this.
Yeah, oh, we've got.
We're just gonna wait a minute for Mr. Henry to come back, and Mr. and Mrs. Taylor and Mr. Brown, thank you for hanging in there tonight, and apologies that you're on the losing end of flipping the agenda around, but hopefully it, it works, except for you, and I apologize for that. The, the final substantive matter on the agenda tonight is a rezoning application for which many of the people during the public comment period spoke, and this is application RZ number 20-10-01, Mount Harry Field Inc., involving Tax Map 38-59, and it's a request for rezoning from Rural Residential Dash Five to, Dash Two. And back in December, this commission did table that application, so, before we go any further, I would like to entertain a motion that we take from the table the application so we can continue forward on this matter.
We'll move.
Mr. Kohler moved to take from the table the, the application, Mr. Sharp seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of taking this from the table, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. I'm a newcomer to the Planning Commission, and I, I'm here temporarily, and so, first of all, I just want to thank all the members of the Planning Commission for all the effort and analysis they put into this application, I also want to thank the applicants. It's, I know it's, it's difficult being a longstanding member of the community to put forward an application like this, and to endure round after round of public comment. I think also, it's important to thank all the members of the public who've come out and have spoken so eloquently and thoughtfully on the application. All that said, under state code and our own ordinance, we're now up against a timing issue with regard to this application, and our, our ordinance basically says that once the application is referred to the Planning Commission, we have 90 days to act, and depending on what you mark as that referral date, we're basically at that deadline. State code gives a little bit more wiggle room, but nevertheless, even taking that wiggle room into account, we would be beyond the time limits by our March meeting. So, with that said, and as a newcomer, having reviewed the meeting in late December, and the very robust discussion, public hearing, et cetera, we're at a point where the Planning Commission must move this forward in some form to the Board of Supervisors for further consideration. And with that, I would like to entertain a motion, and keep in mind, we need to make a recommendation, and that recommendation. a recommendation, and that recommendation to the Board of Supervisors should at least state in part the nature of our recommendation. It's my understanding that we're, the Planning Commission is split on the application, and so one path forward might be to send this on to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation simply for further consideration in the context of the applicable review standards, factors that are enumerated in state code and in our own ordinance. And so, that would, that would be a possible path forward, again, just to refer it to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation for further consideration within the parameters set forth in state code for applications like this one and the parallel provision in our own ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I can, I can understand, given, you know, that obviously the, the Planning Commission is not likely to be unanimous on this, on this vote, whatever we do with that, that there's some temptation to place this in the Board's hands without, without some sort of distinct recommendation. But, given the large amount of, and strong public interest in this that I, that I've certainly received in Sperryville, I feel like it would be more appropriate for us to take a vote and, and give, give the Board a, a firm recommendation one way or another. So, I, I would move that we, that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they deny this application, RZ number 20-10-01, and, and I'm, so I, so I say move on that.
Okay, Ms. Ishi has put forward a motion for a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors to deny the application. Is there a second?
I do have a question before we do this.
Oh, okay.
Is that allowed?
I don't, it's allowed by me.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, so the question I have is, if there were any circumstances under which we would approve it, for example, if it, if it was accessed off of Tool Land, for example?
Mr. Sharp, if I could, we have to be very cautious there in, in not, not putting forward any kind of proper suggestions in that regard.
Okay.
So, Ms. Ishi has made a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they deny the application. Is there a second for her motion?
Yes, I would second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I think it'd be very appropriate for us to, to either take a vote for approval or a denial at this point in time. There was a lot of stuff, when I say stuff, there was a lot of emails submitted, communications submitted to the, Ms. Summers. Some of it came in very late today. Some of it was misleading, some of it was false, some of it was incomplete, and we need to have an opportunity to discuss those things, and I think these items need to be flushed out on supervisor level, and I think we should pass this on to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration, particularly in the items that have been submitted in the last 30 days that we have not discussed.
And one, one thing I will add, and to the credit of my colleagues here, you've developed a, a, a strong case record in all of your comments and the minutes recording those comments, and obviously the public's been very engaged here. So, I think there's a great body of material that will be helpful to the Board of Supervisors. Section 15.2-2284 of the Code of Virginia really lays out the broad parameters and factors that should serve as the lens through which you review these types of applications, and all of your various lines of inquiry, I think, dovetail with what's, what's written there. And I would hope that we simply move it on to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for further consideration in the context of this provision of state code. But your motion's on the table, and there's a second, so see where we go. Any, any additional discussion? Mr. Light?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Henry that there's been a lot of information flowing around this, and some of it is, is kind of either off-point to a degree, or maybe misleading, as he suggested. To me, this is a, there's a couple of really fundamental things that have not, to my judgment, really been articulated. Some of it has been expressed in the public comments tonight. It's the suggestion that somehow we can put limits on this, or we can constrain this, or we can revisit this at the time of a plat review, are all things that I believe since those topics have come up, have been very clearly indicated as not within our purview that we, the vote we take, or whatever is, is, is done, is on the basis of the application before us, and, you know, that is, that is, that's, it's an up or down vote on, on that, on that application. So, I wanted to just get that out there. I do think it's important that even in, no matter what we do in terms of our vote, that we, that we do our work to kind of flesh out these, these issues. And, and again, I, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I know a lot of this has come out, but the one thing that I, that really came to me in the homework I've done since our last meeting is the, the significance of the difference. We talk about this as though it's an application, more along the lines of a special use or a special exception. And I just really want to emphasize that a rezoning is not, this is a, clearly a legislative action that, that is different standards, and, you know, we have a great deal of flexibility, but the one lesson of those court cases that I saw is that the precedent that is set by the arguments for a particular rezoning are very likely to be brought up in future rezonings. And, you know, the, having just passed this comprehensive plan with the language that it has, I just, I really, and again, I'll, I'll keep it short, but I, I really, I don't see how we could possibly do anything other than suggest denial of this application in light of the comprehensive plan that we just worked so hard to pass.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I mean, we tabled this application to allow the applicant to provide any additional information that he might wish regarding the request for rezoning, and since that time, he, he did provide us with a discussion document for, for a potential design, but he hasn't committed to that or any other design, and also hasn't really provided additional information except for some generalized arguments about why Rappahannock County should have additional development. So, I think Mr. Light is right. It's the applicant, it's the application we have in front of us, and there's nothing in the information he has submitted that changes my mind about this application. And in fact, it reinforces concerns that there are a number of potential impacts for which there's no plan and no thought as to how they might be mitigated. For this reason, and because I believe that the existing zoning is at this time both reasonable, the existing zoning, and fully consistent with our recently amended comprehensive plan, I think the right course of action is to go ahead and recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they reject this application. And I, I, I will say, as we've discussed already, but bear saying is, the decision to rezone is a legislative one, which vests a locality with considerable discretion, and the court cases and treatises on this tell us that if we rely on evidence that is related to the public health, safety, and welfare, that shows it as a fairly debatable question as to whether the existing zoning is reasonable, a court will uphold our decision to deny a more intensive rezoning, even if the proposed rezoning could also be considered reasonable. So, a key factor, the threshold question is whether the existing zoning is reasonable. And a key factor in determining if the existing zoning is reasonable is whether it's consistent with a comprehensive plan. We just passed this comprehensive plan in December with this language that I know we've heard, but it's on page 95 in chapter seven of Future Land Use, it says, "This comprehensive plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in or around the major villages, consistent with the undeveloped potential of the current zoning district designations." The comprehensive plan also explains that in considering zoning in and around the, and development in and around the villages, we have medium-density development, which is considered to be one dwelling unit per one to five acres, which therefore could either be village residential, residential, or rural residential, and then low development density is a dwelling unit per 25 acres, which is generally agricultural or conservation districts. So, what we have in Sperryville is residential village and commercial village centered in the core of the village, which is Main Street and some of the surrounding areas, Water Street and some of the surrounding areas right around there, and rural residential zoning surrounding that. Both are interspersed with, with numerous smaller grandfather parcels, many of which are less than a half acre, as we've just saw in the, in the special exception application tonight. Some of these have been previously built on, some of them have not, but, and then on the outskirts of this are lower-density agricultural and conservation districts. So, the rural residential density that's around the core village streets is, is, is fully appropriate, given the character of the area and the topography and road limitations. We have problems of steep slopes here, we've discussed that tonight with this other application, but it, it applies around the whole area. We have floodplain issues, the, we have proximity, the proximity of roads and dwellings to the Sunset of Thornton River is an issue, and these are rightfully reflected, in my opinion, in this rural residential zoning that goes around the core village. As many of our local residents have mentioned, many of our homes and businesses in the core village and around it were built in horse and buggy days and are mere feet from narrow streets and roads, with little to no room for widening to handle increases in traffic. The high water table and poorly developed fracture network, even though we've had discussions today on various studies, it doesn't change the fact that newer wells would have a high likelihood of negatively impacting existing wells, whatever the specifics of the data are. Sperryville, as we all know, also boasts spectacular views that frankly rival any in the world. And keeping density low to help protect our scenic landscape is a core goal of our comprehensive plan. Last, but certainly not least, is the irreplaceable history and unique character of the tiny village of Sperryville. Civil War writers mentioned the town of Sperryville and its beautiful landscape even during the devastation of the Civil War. Were nestled up against one of the most heavily-used national parks, the historic and regional significance of Sperryville needs to be protected from development that might be wholly unsuitable to its size and rural setting. So, in conclusion, given these various factors, coupled with the many building lots available both in and around, around Sperryville and throughout the county, the rural residential zoning density immediately around the core village of Sperryville makes good sense. That's our threshold question. It's fully in line with the comprehensive plan and with the statement that, as I read before, development should be focused in or around the major villages, consistent with the undeveloped potential of the current zoning designations. The proposal before us to rezone this property to higher density gives us little information beyond generalized possibilities as to design and how traffic might be handled, and almost no information as to how runoff or other water issues might be mitigated, or how the character of the village and the rural landscapes might be protected against even incremental increases in density. This reminds me somewhat of a case that I read recently in an adjacent county where the Board denied a rezoning, saying infilling on properties that are available and currently zoned is one thing. To start carving up a long-established stable, stable neighborhood would be a mistake, and I think that would be the case here. Therefore, I do believe we should recommend to the Board that the proposal be rejected.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Ishi, and really, at the outset, my goal was really to express, and, and I believe this is the case, that it seems the Planning Commission has wrestled with this over quite a long period of time. Again, we're, we're up against a deadline that's set forth in state code and in our own code, and I don't think that a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for denial, in my opinion, reflects where this Planning Commission as a group has ended up after protracted discussion and consideration of the application. So, it was my hope that we would simply move it forward to the Board of Supervisors in a way that reflects the fact that essentially you've wrestled with all these questions, and you've come to the conclusion in almost an evenly split way that these are tough questions, and you've looked at everything carefully. So, again, it was my hope that we could just move it forward with a recommendation for further consideration within the context of section 15.2-2284. So, I'm not sure if you'd be interested in withdrawing your motion and perhaps taking that approach, but I, I do think that it would reflect more accurately where, where the Planning Commission has ended up after what I think is, has been a very robust and, and frankly, protracted discussion that's put us up against a deadline.
I would agree with that.
No, I suppose.
Yeah.
I'd like just to say that there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing, and this has devolved into this a little bit, but this is not an application that has anything to do with affordable housing. It is an application to change the zoning, and that's all it is. There's no, there's no other part to this application that affects anything else. And I do, I do believe it's premature, given the fact that there was so much controversy about the maps and how we were going to deal with development in the county, and I think a rezoning is a serious legislative action that takes serious consideration. And I know we've been giving it a lot, but that's what's called for.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
I greatly appreciate your, your efforts at kind of diplomacy and trying to come up with a, a unified message. I, I, my sense, though, is with the range of opinions here, and, you know, for those of us who have been listening and thinking and doing our homework, frankly, I think to, to take away the opportunity to vote as we see as appropriate, based on what we've heard and what we've thought, is, is not doing the service. And, and I suspect that the result will end up the same place that you're talking about anyway, I'm guessing. So, you know, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I agree, we should vote on Mrs. Ishi.
Well, let's, let's get there. Mr. Henry, have you further?
Mr. Chairman, since there was about 10 minutes of discussion in support of the reasons for, to have a vote to turn it down, I'd like to take about three minutes to talk about why I think it's a good idea to approve this application. There's been talk all through this application about this, this application did not meet the standards of the comprehensive plan, and was in violation of the comprehensive plan. I went through the comprehensive plan, and I found five different areas that support what we're doing. Page 88, Principal Four, page 90, Principal Seven, Policy Three, page 96, Residential Development, which was just read by Mrs. Ishi, which I believe might have been read out of context, whereby at the top of page 96, it says minimum density development in parentheses, one dwelling unit per one to five acres. So, the plan says that medium-density residential is one to five acres, so anything in that category is, is acceptable per the comprehensive plan. Page 83, Chapter Six, Goals 11, and page 105, Affordable Housing Statement, all these are in support of what we're doing. And furthermore, there's been comments made about there was plenty of available infill lots, and there was 800 small lots available in the county. So, I went online and looked at what was available in Rappahannock County, and simply looked at it from the standpoint of price. And as of February 10th, there was two parcels in Rappahannock County for sale under $100,000. One of these was a six-acre parcel, mostly floodplain, questioned whether or not it was buildable, and the other one was located on a right-of-way off of another right-of-way. So, very isolated, odd property. In comparison, Madison County had 27 properties under $100,000, Warren County had 92 properties under $100,000, and Culpeper County had 23 properties under $100,000. So, at some point in time, it's very evident that our zoning ordinance is, is almost become an exclusionary to, to provide opportunities for, for reasonable-priced housing. And that leads on to the question of what is affordable housing and what, what makes this affordable? And the simple thing that made this affordable without any addition of tax dollars by the public is simply the fact that you're going for five... fact that you're going from a five acre lot to a two acre lot. And a two acre lot is, is less expensive, of course, and common sense tells you that, than a five acre lot. Plus, there's less, less infrastructure that's required in terms of driveways and things like this. So a two acre lot is less expensive than, than a five acre lot, and provides for a lower priced house. Then the second issue is affordability, affordability, affordability. And that's a movement target at all times. And today, a 30-year fixed rate loan is 2.8%. And a $315,000 loan will cost you $1,302. And a, a working couple, even a single mother, $1,300 is, is what a person can expect to probably pay for a 30, 40-year-old, three-bedroom, two-back house in Rappahannock County. So that leads to say that affordability is offered to a lot of people. Not everybody, but not everybody has ever been on a housing, and that's been determined before. And in terms of the houses that were built per year in Rappahannock, last year it was 22, and 19, there was 20, and 2018 was 21, 2017 was 28, 2016 was 18, 2015 was 33, and 2014 was 18 houses built. So there's not runaway construction in the county. And some of these houses that are being built are simply houses that were burned, and the owners came in to get permits to build a new house. So it's very evident that this small number of houses is, is not going to create a big burden in terms of anything that's going on in Rappahannock County. And items mentioned about water, there was reports sent in today about water that was misleading on 1996 water study that was done in Sperryville. Basically said that the recharge was 700 gallons per day, and that the usage was 30,000 gallons per day. But what was left out was that that was 700 gallons per acre, and Sperryville watershed was 2,200 acres, which meant there was 1.5 million gallons of water coming through that watershed, and 30,000 gallons was being taken out of it. So by any means, there's not a shortage of water in Sperryville. And also, additional information that was told to me by one of the authors of that report says that more recent USGS information would indicate that the water supply is even better than what was stated in the 96 report. And the person that submitted that information, they also had the water tables and studies from the Schoolhouse Project, which would have shown that there was an abundance of water, at least in that report in Sperryville. So I just want to straighten out these things. And what this shows is that we are being reasonable. And what's unique about this property, I said from day one, is that this property has sewer. And that's the sole reason why this property should be rezoned. If this property did not have sewer, and was just a typical piece of R5, then it would not be a candidate. And that's a defensible statement for any other rezonings that come in front of us. And if another property had zone R5 that came in front of us, and the only place that it can have sewer is in Sperryville, not in Namus Field, Lynn Hill. But another property came in front of us that had sewer on it, I think it would be a candidate for rezoning. And it's very proper planning on our part, and it supports our zoning ordinance, it supports a comprehensive plan, and most of all, is defensible in court if we're ever challenged to show that we do consider rezonings and that we are reasonable.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Any, any final discussion before we?
Yeah, I, I'd just, I'd like to respond to a few things Mr. Henry has brought up. And first of all, I'd like to tell him that I appreciate that he's, he's brought some of these other water studies to the fore, because I don't think this should be a hide the ball kind of thing. I think we ought to get whatever information is out there available. But just two quick things on that. I, I, reading from the executive summary of the NSAT thing, I, I didn't, I tried reading through some of the engineering stuff, but they translated it into English for me in the executive summary. And the executive summary is what says that there will be negative impacts on existing wells if new wells are drilled. And that study was done as a neutral study by the planning commission. It was commissioned by the planning commission, it was paid for with county funds. It's a, it's a neutral study. There may be other studies, and that's fine. I, the particular study referring to, I don't doubt that there's, there's anything wrong with it, but it was done, it was a private study done for, by a private consultant for a specific private applicant. And I, I don't know that that makes it suspect in any way, but it, they're just different studies. And, but again, it's not, it's not that important to me, all the specifics of that, because the truth of the matter is there are water table issues in Sperryville, and that's one of the many factors that makes it totally reasonable to have a lesser density zoning surrounding the core villages. And I, if there was any question, you are quite right that in the comprehensive plan, it does say, and if I skipped over that, I apologize, it does say that medium density development is appropriate in and around the villages, and medium density can be anything from one acre to five acres, which would be village residential, which would include village residential, residential, and rural residential. However, we do have village residential in Sperryville. We've got it on Main Street, we've got it all around, as I said. Then surrounding that, we have rural residential, and then surrounding that, we have conservation and ag. And I, I think, given the carrying capacity of our roads and our, our natural lands there, that putting rural residential around those core village streets that are already heavily zoned, especially that since we have a bunch of grandfather, many, many, many grandfathered parcels, some of which are built on, and some are, some of which aren't, but zoned R5. And so to, to take down the zoning is not, it's, it's very appropriate to keep the current density as and not to, not to increase that. I would also just say that on the, on the housing issue, so there was an article in the Rappahannock News of August 6, 2020, that reported that there were 28 sales in Rappahannock County in the second quarter of the year, and that's this year, three more sales than a year ago, which is a 12% gain. So we're holding fairly steady, and this, similar things were reported for 2018. The second quarter of this year, median sales prices in the county, the median sales price was $310,000. So that was the median sales price. So there were houses above that, but there were houses below that as well. That's a 2% decline from last year. And this is the second straight quarter of declining sales prices in the county's housing market, they say. They, they also note that there were 50 active listings on the market in Rappahannock at the end of the second quarter, which is 34 fewer listings than a year ago because the market has been so brisk with, with COVID. This is the largest supply drop on the county's housing market in more than five years because of the county, because of the COVID stuff. But average days on the market in Rappahannock County during the second quarter were 68 days. So it's not like the, the housing stock is going down some, but houses are still sitting on the market for 68 days or more. So Mary Graham told me that she did an analysis, and 75% of the houses in Rappahannock County are assessed at $300,000 or less, 75%. Now, that's not the land, and I agree that that impacts it, but many, many of those are on small parcels. So this is why the comprehensive plan says, says that we will look at, we're going to, we consider the current housing market adequate, given our family subdivision ordinances and all the other ordinances that exist. And we will relook at this issue again when the Rappahannock Rapid and Community Services, Community Board study comes out, to see what actual data shows us, rather than just talking about this vague concept of affordable housing. But even with all that, the bottom line is, I can tell you, many, many parcels on two acres up in Northern Virginia have $3 million homes on them. Simply having a two acre parcel does not mean they're going to have affordable housing. And there's been nothing that indicates that this is going to be, you know, directed in that way. So thank you for your time on that.
Thank you. Yeah, again, not to beat a dead horse here, but it's, to me, it does not seem that a, a recommendation for denial really reflects the collective view of, of the planning commission. You made a motion, there has been a second. Who, who made the second of Mrs. Ishi's motion? Mr. Light?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, the third seconds. There's a lot of data, opinions, the comprehensive plan that we just said passed says, "Taking into account the current and future needs of residents of Rappahannock County, including existing housing stock and the provisions of the current zoning and subdivision ordinances relative to family apartments and exceptions for family subdivisions, as well as the current and future needs expressed by the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission, there are no specific areas or measures required for affordable housing." People's individual opinions can say what they want about what's affordable. This is our official position on this, and to do a rezoning on this basis is in complete opposition to what we just said in our comprehensive plan. So, you know, this is not part of a comprehensive review. It's an individual parcel. It's spot zoning. It's not maybe the worst form of spot zoning, but that is the issue here, and that is what we're trying to preserve, and that is what I feel the need to be emphasized.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call the question. And just to be clear, so everyone knows, the, the motion is to recommend that the board of supervisors deny the application for rezoning. Mr. Henry?
No.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp?
No.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Ms. Ishi?
Aye.
Mr. Shulun?
No.
And I vote no also, so that, that motion fails.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we forward the application for rezoning on to the board of supervisors for their additional consideration.
Okay. And if you wouldn't mind just referencing section 15.2-2284 of the Code of Virginia?
Please let the records reflect that.
Okay. So there is a motion on the table from Mr. Henry to send this on to the board of supervisors with a recommendation for further consideration within the parameters of section 15.2-2284 of the Code of Virginia, which basically lays out the factors that should be taken into account when reviewing applications like this one. Do I hear a second of his motion? Mr. Shulun, seconds. Any further discussion?
Um, not, I, I appreciate, as Mr. Light said, Mr. Chairman, your natural instincts for diplomacy and, and trying to come up with something that will avoid controversy. I, I'm disappointed that we would not take a, a stand on this, because I think that's exactly what a planning commission is supposed to do. The, the two issues that I see as most important for a planning commission to provide advice and, and, and direction on our review of a comprehensive plan and zonings. And I feel like it's a little bit an abrogation of our, our duty and our, our responsibility to, to simply move something on to the board with just a, an amorphous record. That, that, I do find that a bit disappointing, although I, as I said, I, I appreciate. And I, one of the things that I was also disappointed by was that I was not here at the beginning. I was unavoidably delayed at the beginning of our last meeting, and I did not get a chance to vote in favor of Mr. Whitson as our chairman. And I appreciate very much that you've been willing to take on that role. So thank you for that. And I, I would like to add my voice to that vote. But, but on, on this particular matter, I, I, I think it, it doesn't, it's, we're not doing for God.
Yeah. And just to be clear, this is not a diplomatic effort. I think you've developed a very, very strong record, and there's a lot of material. And I think you've, you've done your job exactly as you all should, which is to pass on to the local governing body a very, a very thoughtful set of analyses that hopefully will inform their decision. So I thank you all for that. Okay, so there's a motion to send this on to the board of supervisors with a recommendation for further consideration, and a second from Mr. Sharp.
Shulun.
Mr. Shulun, I apologize. Mr. Shulun, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Light?
No.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Ms. Ishi?
Aye.
Mr. Shulun?
Yes.
And I will vote yes also. So, so that moves it on to the board of supervisors, and fortunately, we're no longer up against a timeline. And thank you all again for everything you put into this. And thank you to the applicant and to Mr. Brown for, for what's been a pretty involved few months. So this will now be moved on to the board of supervisors for a final decision on the application. And I thank everyone who came out tonight on this. Last calendar year, he set forward a very good work plan. So for informational purposes, we, we now have a, a very strong tracking table for our ongoing review of zoning changes, amendments, corrections, et cetera. And so I mentioned earlier, I'd like to call a work session. Hopefully, weather will cooperate this time around. We don't have to settle on that now, but I'll work with Ms. Summers tomorrow to schedule that and get the word out. But I'm, I'm thinking about two weeks from now. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Henry and Mr. Light, thank you.
Good discussion.
Discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Be safe in the storm. Thanks.
[inaudible]
Well, we'll see.